Okay, I call this meeting to order at 6:35 PM. And begin with public input. Does anybody that would like to say anything? I don't see anybody online. Good. Okay, moving on. And Tim?
You may start.
Hi, Tim. I was just gonna say, can you hear us?
Yeah, I, now I can, yeah.
Okay. Student report, none at this time. So we'll go right to new business. And if the maskers are ready, do you wanna go?
Go ahead.
Come on up.
There you go.
Hello, I am Sophia Navo, the president this year of Maskers. And today we'll be talking about the Haunted Playground. It'll be Saturday, October 19th, from 5 to 9 at The Batch. So to start off, talk about some history of the event. It started in 2004 by the Martins Pond Association. And then in 2019, Maskers took it over and rebooted it as the Haunted Playground. Since then, we've done a lot of different adaptations of this event. In 2020, we did the haunted walk-through, which was a safe way to keep it going with all of the health regulations because of COVID. And then last year, due to unfortunate weather, we moved it inside the high school. And then this year, we're hoping to have it outside at The Batch as we typically do. And then, so here's one of our maps of this event that we've used in the past. We've had the horse carriage going around the parking lot in the back by the PBD courts. And then we've had the shuttle going through the car drop-off and dropping off people right at the entrance. And we've had the whole event centered around the grass field and the blacktop in front of the playground. This year, we're hoping to change this up a little bit. So we've expanded the event onto the car drop-off area. And instead, the shuttle will be going up that street and turning around at the little island next to The Batch, and then going back down that same road. So we've decided to expand because we've noticed in the last few years doing this event here that it's gotten a little congested with the amount of people that have been coming. So to get a better flow of people there, we've decided to open up into that area. And we've also added more events, so that gives us more space to do that as well. And then, moving on to the next slide.
Basileki's gonna start. Hi, I'm Basileki Kordikidis. I am Maskers historian for this year, and I will be talking about entertainment. So basically, the approximate number for the wristbands we are selling is $30. We have the five inflatables, the three skits, the haunted maze, and the haunted house, which all come together. Like, if you buy the wristband, you can do all of them as many times as you want. If your kid wants to go on all the inflatables, like 15 times per se, they can go on it. But if you just wanna buy, for instance, the haunted maze, you could just buy that for $5, or just buy one of the events for $5. Anything is available. If they wanna do wristbands, the $5. Or if you just wanna go walk around and have a great night, you can do that. It's all up to you guys. Just, we'll be talking about entertainment.
Hi, my name's Eliana. I'm the Maskers underclassman representative for this year, and I'll also be talking about entertainment. Now, in addition to the options that Basileki was talking about, Haunted Playground often includes a lot of student-run entertainment. One of the events that we do is the three skits, which is all run by us and features some of our own actors. And in addition to that, we have other activities such as face painting, the scavenger hunt, the haunted house, and professional midway games that we run ourselves. Now, since this is a community event, like, the kids often come dressed in costume, and they interact with some of our characters dressed in costume. And it gives a lot of, like, the feel of a magical experience for them. And this is practically a production that we put on every year. And we've been doing this, we've been entertaining at Haunted Playground for years now.
Hello, everyone. I'm Anthony Spina. I'm the treasurer of Maskers, and I will be talking to you guys about food. So there's a great deal of options we have for food. We have local restaurants who have graciously donated to us. And their food will be located at our large white tent. We also have a company that we are working with who will be supplying regular concession foods such as popcorn and cotton candy. To make sure that everything is running well and safely, we have begun working with Mr. Bracy to make sure that everything is up to health standards. We are also working with Chartwell's, and their job is to make sure that the food is up to temp and safe to eat. We are lucky enough as well to have adult volunteers who are SafeServe certified, making sure that everything we do is safe. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Manupelli, the Maskers secretary for this year, and I'm just here to talk about some logistics. Pretty big event. We're gonna need around 18 tents, and that includes the food tent, the concessions, the haunted house. And on top of the haunted house, we're gonna have Jerry Noel help us. He's gonna be an inspector to make sure everything is safe. For generators, for the power, we're only gonna have one generator. It's gonna sit by an inflatable on the blacktop. It's near, it's in the parking lot. Mr. Campania's gonna be helping us with that. The cords and spider boxes have GFCIs, which will prevent any shortages from, like, all the power just going out. For signage, we're gonna have NRPD helping us. They will be on scene, doing detail. They'll help with the parking and the shuttle. There's gonna be signs for prices, instructions on where to go. The shuttle, which will, the shuttle, which will go around the parking lot, they'll help with that. And where, of course, where the bathroom is. Because we got rid of the horse carriage, parking will be available more in the lower lot and in the upper lot. And of course, again, the shuttle will help, will transport people with that. We're working with the DPW, the fire department, the police department, Board of Health, and the public schools and Parks and Rec to make sure we have all the necessary permits to do this. And how many people do we need to run this? Around 50 to 75. A lot of that will be adult volunteers, and most of it will be students, especially ones who aren't in Maskers looking for community service hours.
Hi, my name is Matthew Capaboe, and I'm the upperclassman representative of Maskers. And I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the safety for Haunted Playground. So with Haunted Playground, we want it to be the most fun and exciting event that it can be for the community. And with that comes the assurance that it will be safe. So some of the things that we're doing to make sure that it's safe include having a first aid table with a registered nurse in the very center of the event, so that if anything were to happen, they're there and they can help. We also have fire extinguishers at all of the stations across the event. And we have, with our generator, we have to run wires to get power to everywhere. So to make them not a tripping hazard, we will cover them and flag them so that the risk of injury goes down significantly. Additionally, we have a bunch of food safety practices in place. So we have a hand washing station that we rent from New England Restrooms. And we are also going to place hand sanitizer at all of the tables. Additionally, with the people who are serving the food, all of them are SafeServe certified, which means that they know how to manage and serve and regulate the temperature of all of the food that's being served, and make sure that it is safe to consume. Additionally, there are two very important rules for the safety of everyone at the event. The first one being that no pets are allowed. The only exception to this is service animals, but other than that, no pets are allowed at Haunted Playground. And second, as much as we love how much the kids, you know, get into Haunted Playground and dress up in their costumes, if their costume has, say, a prop sword or any prop weapons, those are not allowed at Haunted Playground. If one of them brings them and is like, "Oh, I don't have a place to put this," we have buckets at the welcome tables in which they can place them and pick them up as they leave. These two rules just ensure the safety of everyone at Haunted Playground and make sure that it is the best it possibly can be.
Hi, my name is Matt Mulcahy. I am the Maskers vice president for this year. And last year, we did face unfortunate weather circumstances, and we had to move our event indoors. The benefit of that is now we have a set weather plan in case anything like that were to happen again. As for the inflatables, we keep them in the gymnasium. But what the inflatables we're adding now, we may have to remove a couple if we were to move inside. Also, for midway games, we had a few set up in Main Street, the main hallway in the high school. And we would do that again if we were to move inside. And as for food, we would do everything relatively the same. We would have parent volunteers, SafeServe certified parent volunteers, serving the food, and it would still be kept warm. And will be maintenance by Chartwell's. And yeah, oh, and our skits will be moved into the auxiliary gym. It takes a lot of people to keep our event successful, and we like to keep in touch with all the town organizations and all of the people that we work with. We like to keep everyone in the know, and we are so grateful to have so many wonderful people from the town supporting us.
Hello, it's me again, and I'll be talking about our future plan for Haunted Playground. So looking ahead, we'd love to expand this event to two days, a Saturday and Sunday event. And in order to do that, we would have to hire a company. This company that we've been, that we've started having conversation with, they're based out of Wilmington. So it's very local, and they would provide inflatables, food trucks, generators, rides, power their own equipment, also staff their own equipment, which would be very helpful for us. Because from what we've done with this event in the last six years, we've gotten it as big as we can. We've grown it to what we know that we're capable of doing. And by taking it that next step, we would have to hire professionals who know what they're doing in this field of events like this. And we've also begun discussions with the fire department, the public school system, and Parks and Rec. And we're hoping to start conversations in the next few weeks with the Board of Health, the police department, and DPW as well about this future plan. And thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions, please let us know.
Of course. Excellent presentation as always, and welcome to the new people who haven't been here before. Questions, anybody?
No questions, just as someone who's attended the event but haven't seen all behind the scenes, I'm just really impressed about everything that goes on. You know, you go and have fun, but forget that you guys put a substantial amount of work into this. I love seeing it.
Noel?
Yeah, I love the plans for expansion. That's a great idea. And also, I love having you guys present because you, no one is afraid of public speaking. So it's very, a lot of pleasurable experience. But no, great, great work. Can't wait to send my kids again this year. So thank you.
Tim, any questions or thoughts?
Nope, just, looks like you have about $200 wristbands in the future from the Sutherland household, so looking forward to it again as always.
Oh, I won't let you off that easy. I feel like if you come, we have to ask a couple of questions, so. Most of my questions are about next year, but I'm not gonna ask them because I'm sure you don't have all the answers yet.
You might have a lot.
Okay, well, I might ask them. But on this year, I'm gonna start with just, with the new layout. So number one, I saw the stage. Are the skits gonna be on the stage now?
I can go back to that slide. So the skits will still be in their same tent that is normally along the border of the street. And the stage will be where the magician performs, where the acapella groups perform. So it'll be just as usual, just the stage will be in a new location.
So the skits are separate, the stage is just for the magician, things like that? Okay. And then, the haunted house, is that in The Batch or is it in front of The Batch?
So it'll be in front of The Batch. Part of it will be under the overpass area, and then part of it will be on the sidewalk and in the street, and we'll be using tents to build that structure.
Okay. And then, the more broad question, I guess, would be, what are some of the challenges you faced, other than weather, obviously, moving in last year? But, I mean, I imagine there's probably a reason for changing the layout and things like that, so I'm just curious, like, what are the challenges that you're trying to address with the new layout, with whatever you're doing this year?
Yeah, so we've realized in the past that that horse carriage, really, it wasn't that beneficial for us with this event. And also, a lot of people didn't know that it was happening over there. So we thought by bringing an event closer to where the actual event is centered around, we could draw a lot more people over there. And also, trying something new, we thought would be very exciting for a lot of the kids. So that would be good.
So for next year, then, not going too far down the road, but like, obviously, right now, it seems like the overhead is pretty small for this, because a lot of things are donated, a lot of things are done by volunteers. Bringing in another company adds an expense to it. And so I'm just curious if you, like, what the projections would be for the budget about, you know, like, when you do this size one evening, sort of what the cost for you is, like, what the net would be? And what do you think bringing, because I imagine one of the big goals is to have raised more money by going to two days. And so, curious what your thoughts are about what that would be, what your projections are.
So by hiring this company and the conversations that we've started with their people that work there, it's been discussed that rather than paying them a fee to come work this event, they would work this event as they do every weekend. They put on carnivals and events like this in different towns, such as Andover, Wilmington, Wakefield. And they put on events, and then they give the people that are sponsoring it, it would be Maskers, they would give them a percentage of their gross. So rather than paying them to come to us, they're paying us because we're giving them a spot for that weekend.
Right. Do you have any idea, like, so like, right now, what do you typically make from, I mean, I know last year was right down inside, but I mean, what's the expectation? Is it like, something like $15,000 or something?
Yeah, so we hope to profit, like, 12 to 15 every year from on top of what we've spent.
Well, good luck. We've been there every year and look forward to supporting you guys again. Oh, actually, last question is, just nothing at all related to myself, but like, if, do, I know parents are supposed to work right now when they're on the one-night one. What are the parent expectations for next year if it's gonna be two days?
So, from what we-
Just hypothetical.
Yeah, so as of right now, from what we've talked about, starting this future plan and discussing it amongst the officers and Mrs. Kane, we've talked about still having on that Saturday night, we would still have those same four hours, or maybe, like, all-day Saturday, and we could do shifts amongst the parents and all the volunteers, where we could still sell that local food that we get donated. That way, we could still keep it as the Maskers tradition. We would still have the skits and everything. And then maybe the Sunday would be mostly the, what the company is offering, and then maybe a few people who wanted to do the two days could come in and still keep the, like, maybe the walk-around characters or something, just to keep that Maskers feel and that our tradition still alive.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sutherland?
Sorry, Scott, you spawned one more. I never walked over where you're showing the emergency exit over by Apple Street. I'm assuming that's the gap in the fence by Apple Street. Do we have somebody there that's there to watch to make sure the kids can't just wander out from the playground right out onto the busy road right there?
Yeah, so we will have fencing in front of the playground. The, so we have black tarp fencing that goes all around the playground and blocks off that area before the opening to the fence. So yes, that emergency exit is there. And then, obviously, if an emergency were to happen, there would be people there guiding people. But yes, that emergency exit, it was blocked off from the playground.
Perfect, thank you.
And I guess, my only last question would be then, if you expanded to Sunday, are there any sports or things like that on the fields there that you have to contest with? I mean, what's the scheduling issue?
So typically, there is youth football at the football field. And so that parking, obviously, would be available for the event, but also, like, we would have the overflow parking. And those people, like, at the, could park at the top and then still use the shuttle to come down and go there. And we're actually at both locations because we do run the snack shack for the youth football games as well. So we would be able to help guide that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, oh, somebody else has appeared. So if any, if nothing else, we, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Haunted Playground for this year.
Move to approve the Haunted Playground for 2024.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Because Tim is in San Diego, we need to do a roll call vote. So Noel?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Dr. Daly?
Just wanna say thank you. Great job with your presentation as always. And this doesn't get out of the Simics Project requirement, but I wish to say every year that this is exactly what we're talking about. Like, you have a great idea, but you have to think of, first, you have to meet with me, you have to meet with the principal, you have to meet everyone on the school side. But then also, you're learning all those key players in town that you need to talk to. What you're learning through this, you're gonna be able to scale up whenever you wanna do something as a young adult or as an adult in town. So, great job. And the way you presented tonight, people are gonna look for your ideas to do such a great job. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. Kane, for organizing.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, all. Okay. Since everything else is Dr. Daly or Mr. Connolly, I think I may just go back and do the continued business first, just because I don't wanna forget those later on. So we have two policies. I don't think there's a lot of discussion needed on them, as we talked about the last time. So the first one, if I can have a motion to approve or second reading policy, AFC-R.
I just don't have my thing up. Let's see. Move to approve second reading of policy AFC-R.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this policy? Just to remind everybody, the two people that might be watching, this is extending the delay from 90 minutes to two hours, which works better with a lot of neighboring districts. There's no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Noel?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero. I almost called you Rich, sorry.
Ouch.
Then, the next one is a reading on policy, but it's not AC. AC is the MSBA or MASC policy. We're saying it's gonna be called ABBA instead of AC. We'll do separate motions to remove other ones, but the first thing is we can have a motion to approve for a second reading policy that will now be known as ABBA.
Okay, I move to approve for a second reading the policy now known as ABBA?
ABBA.
ABBA?
You can sing it if you'd like.
Oh, no.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this motion? We'll do a roll call vote. Noel?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero. And then, as part of this, with the new policy that we have, ABBA, there are four policies, correct, Dr. Daly, that we do no longer need, which are ABB, ABBA-R1, ABBA-R2, ABBB, and ABB-E? Is that what it was?
Correct.
Want me to say it even faster for you? ABB, I'm like BBB. So I'll have, so I'll entertain a motion to remove the following four policies, ABBA-R1, ABBA-R2, ABBB, and ABB-B-E.
Why did I start the term this time?
I believe it's ABBA that's being replaced, and ABBA-E being replaced.
Oh, ABBA dash.
And then, ABBA-R1 and ABBA-R2 are being-
So the only amendment to that is so, yeah, so if you look at their-
And R1 and R2 are procedures, they're not-
Yes, the procedures.
So, but we're gonna remove them.
Totally not confusing.
Okay. I move to-
Remove.
Remove the former policies, AVAA?
ABBA.
I feel like I'm in an eye-seen test. ABBA, A, thank you, ABBA-E, ABBA-R1, and ABBA-R2.
We have a motion, I mean, a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, which is completely irrelevant. What is the naming convention of, like, why do these, why do these have these names?
Oh, the policies?
Why aren't they just numbered?
I don't know. Pro, actually, I do, I bet I know. I bet I know why, because then, if you did numbers, then you'd end up with like 1-1.12, 1.13. But I think, I think this aligns somewhat with what MASC does, although we don't stick exactly to them.
Yeah, Mr. Buckley?
Yeah, that allows for district to district to be able to at least find, I think.
Yeah, and to be similar. So for some reason, that, that was the confusion with this. The MASC policy was AC. We have another policy, AC, but the, when legal counsel reviewed this for us, they told us to replace AC, and so that's what we were using, but it didn't make sense when I went into look at it and when others looked. So I got clarification on exactly what we should do with this one. The whole history of how things were named and why, and why, I'm thinking we must have already had an AC, and when they added an AC, we had to make all these BBs. And that seems to be the naming convention when it's related, they just add dash letters on there. The R's usually refer to procedures, and those don't need to be published in the manual. And so the recommendation of counsel is that we remove them from the manual. So as the policy subcommittee's starting to look across all areas, we're gonna consider whether those should be removed as well, or how we wanna publish them, what that looks like. The procedures are things that are decided at the superintendent or school level, and they don't need to be reviewed in first and second readings for changes. That allows us to make changes under regulations, make updates every year to dates and different things as needed, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Just curious.
We have a motion to remove, we have a second, so we'll do a roll call vote. Noel?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero. Thank you very much. Moving on, we'll do the school opening update from Dr. Daly.
Very good. So, as you know, we had schools started for our students on Thursday. We had our-
Anybody show up on Wednesday or not?
We did, not that, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'm just curious.
We had a professional development day for our teachers on Tuesday. We had our welcome back on Wednesday, our welcome back day with all of our staff, teachers and educators that had time in their buildings. Thursday, we welcomed our students, pre-K and K orientation on Thursday and Friday of last week. And then our first day for pre-K and K was today. So all reports, everything has gone very well. We did have a tragedy, obviously, in Georgia last week that was very concerning to us. So we talked about that a little bit in an update that I sent out to the, to the community. We had a very minor incident in a residential area near the school where there was a very slight gas, a gas line was hit, residential, an old line. There was no danger to the schools, but I used that as the opportunity to just share out how we communicate emergency updates and to share out that, you know, some thoughts about the supports we have in place when there are tragedies in the community or in the world. We basically have adopted this policy that was recommended through a lot of agencies about red light, blue light, spotlight. So whenever there's an ambulance, whenever there's a fire truck, whenever there's police at the schools, we will communicate out, just to say as much as we can, just so the speculation isn't there. I know my own community today, it's amazing how it happens, like, someone sees it on Facebook, "Why did this happen?" The rumor was already out that something had happened with a, you know, something in a classroom, and it wasn't true, and the schools responded quickly. This is in my district, but it just is a reminder to me how important it is to communicate out, yeah.
So just, just a question for clarification on the gas leak. So it was not at the school, but there-
No, residential.
Okay, but, so there were just, there wasn't-
They were all-
...response at our school, they were just near our school?
Yeah, I, I don't know this 100%, but I'm going to say that because of the construction on Mead Road, which is all being torn up right now, they may not have been able to get the vehicles up that way, so they came onto our property to get in that way. So they, I don't know in a typical situation whether they would have even needed to be on our property, but because of all that construction, they came up on our property. So you see all the lights, you know, we wanna make sure we're communicating that out.
Okay.
And that was, I believe, the second day of school, so. But had there been any kind of a threat or a gas leak, we would've gone into our, you know, our gas leak evacuation procedures where we would've gone, you know, either shelter in place or relocated down to the fields or wherever the procedures called for. But that, none of that was needed. It was really just, it was a small residential. They are making some improvements to the water main and they, they are going to do some construction on site, probably in the next few days or next week. They're, they're going to do that work between nine and two. So it should not interfere with drop off and pickup in any way. They're very, it's very clear that that area where they're working is right part of the loop for drop up and pickup, so shouldn't interfere.
I have two quick questions. I don't know if anybody else has any questions first.
I just had a quick question, you know, just, and it's mostly because people in community have asked me and I have not been sure how to respond. The increased police presence at the school since school opened. People weren't, weren't sure if that was because of just the getting used to new traffic patterns or for new, new drivers and things like that. Or if it was because of the incidents.
Yeah, no, great question. They were here the first day as well.
Yeah.
The, it just did coincide with that. That's always our plan that that actually ended this morning. So we do, and the, and the presence was only really at the school. They, they do watch the crossing guards and things. But the traffic pattern here is where those folks are, yeah.
It's funny because I think a lot of people, based on what I heard, thought that it was because, an increased police presence because of what had happened in Georgia. And the response was like, I'm so glad to see them here.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, that's just, just to, to put that in perspective, I'm sure you probably heard.
It is. I, I did talk to the chief about whether we would do anything differently. And, you know, our, our stance here, and this is not how it is, it's different in different communities. We always say we're doing everything we can every day to be vigilant. So having an extra police officer there the next morning is, and then what happens when they're not there, right? So it's like, we, we always are safe. We have our patrols. We have, you know, I put out that statement as well before school and I put it out there again. You know, we don't have the resources to have police officers here all day long. So to, to do it the morning after something is in the news, I get why that does provide some comfort. But we, our message is that we are always doing things. We have our patrols. We have our relationship with the SRO. We have our constant communication. So we didn't do purposefully an increase. It did coincide and I'm glad, anything that provides people extra comfort is a great thing. But that was not planned because of that incident.
Thank you.
So I just, I have a few questions. First one's for Mr. Connolly and I'm pretty sure he can predict what it's going to be. But Mr. Connolly, bus passes, what, what, how are we, what are we doing with like the waitlist? Has anybody come off it or are there more on there?
So we were able, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Very well.
Very well. So it's a good question. I have the, the, looking, following the data. We are, we were able to release some of the students on the waitlist that were initially on that week before school at our last meeting. We, but since then it has, also it has some late enrollees, you know, late last week. So we are still looking at eight students on the waitlist. Some of those, you know, again, that's a combination of us finding spots for a handful, but then five more kind of, you know, later enrollees that came in. Kind of at the start of school last week. So the waitlist is eight. We have sold 1,231 bus passes. So I think at the time of the last meeting, we were like 1,201. So when I think I said, I think we're going to see this grow, posted up, you know, 1,240, 1,245, which is sort of the average of the last few years.
Okay, and, and can you just give an update overall on the buses and, and I guess drop off too?
Yeah, so I am, I'm quite understanding. I, I met with Rosalie McKillup, who's kind of the bus pass scheduling coordinator in the office. Does an exceptional job prior to the end of the, the business day today. And she, we haven't, and I would always want to kind of knock on wood, we haven't, it's been very, very quiet and no news is good news in busing. I, we was monitoring through the GPS the routes the first certainly couple of days. Had to make a couple of minor tweaks to some of the routes, just in terms of when the driver was starting. If there was always a little, things, things were always slow at first days, confusion of bus aid, bus routes that kind of overlap, that type of thing. But I think overall it's been very smooth. I don't, at the moment I'm not anticipating having to make like a lot of changes, if any, to the bus routes. Which is what, which we typically do kind of midweek this week or like later half of this week to make, to get things to run timely. So we're continuing to monitor though and we're, but everything has been okay. It's been pretty good.
And, and, and with regards to Bus Right, the app, I didn't see any emails come out about it, but I, I, I appreciate it. My kids are on the same bus right now, so it, it worked first day perfectly still.
Yeah.
But is there, is there going to be communication out about that as well?
I did send an email, so there was an email that went out about busing, maybe the day before the school started school or two days before. That said, everything should be functioning with the bus pass. We intended to have it up and running for the first day. So that, that should have been, it was kind of in a blog or like a larger email. It was a section on Bus Right, the app. So that should have gone out to everyone. We did have to do a lot of work the day before the start of the school to get the students listed on the stops and to make sure it was going to be working. We weren't, apparently we weren't sure if we're going to get it all done. And I was, we kind of sent an email saying, you know, the app might not work till day two. But we got it all done. So we, I think it should be working for those parents that have downloaded it and are using it. It should be working.
Great. Mr. Sutherland?
Just our questions I've gotten around the community. Where are the buses full? What's driving the waitlist? Isn't the buses are full or the way the route moves or is it a combination of both?
Uh, the buses are at capacity. So we, we, we release as many, many, trying to get as many students on the bus as possible. And in his own district contract, there's only a waitlist at the middle school and the high school. So the elementary, there's plenty of stops, plenty of space. Not plenty, but there's certainly space. So there's, there's really only been a waitlist at the middle school and the high school. And there are five buses that are essentially at, at capacity. We've tried to move things and we've done that to release the waitlist and get it down to where it is. And we do, we do kind of do this every year. We move stops from, you know, bus seven, the bus eight, the bus two, the bus three to where there's a heavy, more heavy, heavy demand. So it's, it's just, it's at capacity. It's really at that, at that level. The capacity of seventy-seven bus, buses less. It's really like fifty-one to fifty-four students a bus. And we are at, or a little bit in some cases, you know, at capacity. So there's really, it's in five of twelve, the twelve routes.
And, and, and how many registered for the late bus? I, so I did read some of your emails, Michael. I saw some of them, but how many, how many registered for the late?
Mrs. O'Connell sent out, sent out the late bus notification. We work with her on that. The only registrations are coming in. I honestly, I haven't seen that. I think it's, it's generally gets, gets as much as like a hundred students. And even though those number of students don't, don't necessarily take the bus each day. So our, I just was talking to Rosie about this today. Our, I mean, I think we released that we have a goal of starting on line seventeen or nine sixteen. I don't know. I think it will be either the next week or the week after that if, if the late bus will be available. But Mrs. O'Connell said that's okay, you know, she said clubs don't start until the first week of October, that active school activity, so. But there is, it's, again, I think it's almost like at capacity again or close to it. But we, we will release, there is a waitlist. I haven't heard that there is yet. If, if the waitlist grows, we release those stops because we know that not everyone takes it every day.
Okay, thank you very much.
How many families are still on the waitlist?
Eight, eight families.
Okay.
Eight, eight students or eight families?
Uh, eight students and.
But there were, there were, there were five before and you said those pretty much all, I think you said those all got it or we got down to three?
We, we, yeah, we released the majority of those five. We're able to get it. There's eight, so there's seven families, eight students, what I'm seeing.
And Michael, everyone who got in by the deadline got in or?
I mean, yeah, these, well, honestly, these are families that were sort of late August, September enrollees. In some cases early, maybe, maybe like mid August, early August.
Yeah, and, and just to repeat, I mean, we have to, we have to inform the bus company well before that about how many buses we need and budget for it and the budget in the spring, so. Okay, and then my only other question, which is a little bit out there, but at the opening day remarks, which by the way, I thought Dr. Daly did an excellent job as, as always. Appreciated the comments from Barbara, Barbara Mentary, is that how I say it?
Mentary.
Mentary. But she brought up the ballot question that's happening about, with, about MCAS. And I'm just curious, if, depending on how that happens, would it impact graduation this year? So if, if it, if the ballot question happens, does something more have to happen before it's removed as a requirement for graduation?
Yes.
So we're talking about not this year. It wouldn't impact this year. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not even sure whether it's binding or not. So you'd have to see. It's, 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 you know, the Commonwealth, the certificate of, you know, the, the CD. That's all that this impacts. So there's a lot of misinformation out there. People think this is getting rid of MCAS. It doesn't change anything with MCAS. The only thing it would change is whether there's a, a score that's needed for graduation.
Yeah.
So it would then be taken under consideration. And so we'll hear a lot more as it gets closer about whether this is binding, what the impacts would be.
Yeah.
But it definitely would not go into effect. It would have to take time for them to understand it, what the impacts is. So probably, I would guess a few years before we'd see any kind, at the earliest I would say next year.
Okay. I was just curious because like, obviously it's the middle of the year, something changed like that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so everyone should still take their retest if they haven't passed.
Yeah.
We're not changing anything.
Any other questions on opening, school opening? Okay, we don't need to vote on school opening. Why don't we just go out of order? Why don't we do budget goals next? Well, actually do it under the school committee goals because they relate to the budget goals? I don't think it matters.
Whatever you'd like to do.
I'm sure it matters.
Let's, okay, let's just go school, school committee goals then. Real quick, if everybody had a chance to look over them. I guess I will just quickly read just for the people that are on, on the meeting that are listening. So every year the school committee meets to try to lay out what our goals for the year are. We made a change a few years ago. We used to just have a lot of list of basically our general responsibilities, like pass a budget or, you know, review policies. And so we wanted to be more clear. They're all school committee goals for all of us. But we assign one or two members to sort of lead the charge because a lot of work needs to be done outside of meetings on these. So I'm just going to go through very quickly and who's assigned to them. If anybody has any questions on anything in the middle, just let me know. The first group are under leadership and governance and we have three goals. The first one is to engage in professional development presentation related to what the school committee responsibilities and authority is under mass general laws. This is one that has lingered for a couple of years that we haven't done, but we have full confidence that Tim and Noel will lead us to get completion this year. Second one is a new one. We're going to invite our local state representatives, Representative Brad Jones and Senator Bruce Tar. To a North Reading School Committee meeting to provide an update on, you know, North Reading schools and gather information from them about what's happening at the state level. Third, we are going to try to host a joint meeting of town boards to discuss relevant town issues, engage in an open dialogue. Because obviously some of the things that are impacting us also impact other, you know, other boards in town. So it makes sense for us to talk all together. Oh, and Jen and I are going to work with the state, our state, our local reps. And Jeff and I are going to organize the joint meeting. Any comments or thoughts or discussion or concerns on those three? Moving on, we have five goals under financial and asset management. The first one is to support, continue, to continue to support the Student Opportunity Act goal. That describes our district plan to reduce the kindergarten fees, hopefully leading to free kindergarten. And to start exploring universal access to pre-K. Jeff and I are going to tackle that. Second one is to look into some reduced expenses associated with energy costs. And we look, we're going to look into solar power and charging stations. Jeff's going to do that one. Third one is school committee will support the superintendent in communicating to the town the impacts of the budget cuts for the 2024, 2025 school year. And the potential impacts for 26 and 27. Obviously there were cuts that were needed this year. And we need to make sure the community understands what those are and the impact of them and how it will impact next year with the funds that we have. And Tim and Jen have agreed to take on that role. School committee will review the impact on North Reading Public Schools of the current fee structure for extracurriculars, athletics and performing arts. And we want to make sure that those are in line with what they should be. So Jeff and I are going to look at that. And then finally, school committee will review all aspects of school transportation, including bus fees, contract rates. We are just a reminder, we're in the last option year of the bus contract. And so we will have to decide at some point whether we're going to exercise that option or go out to bid again. And either way, get ready to go out to bid for next year if needed. And Noel and I are going to spearhead that. Under educational program, we have two goals, but one of them has subgoals. So first, we want to participate in a number of working groups that are looking at major issues that are impacting North Reading Public Schools. The first one is the Equity, Diversion, Inclusion and Belonging Group, and Jeff and Tim are going to take on that. Outdoor Time and Recession will be Noel and Jen. And Student Mental Health and Social Media Device Usage will be Jen and Noel as well. And then the other goal will be to encourage a district-wide expansion of the MTSS and rethinking Power Block. And we will just ask for some presentations, more to know what's going on there, and Noel and I will do that. And then the last group are family. Yes, good.
Before we go on to family and communities, so I've already gotten questions from some community members about the outdoor time and recess.
Yes.
And is there any way to put either in the goal or in the NRPS 2025 or in the next NRPS? That it already is at twenty minutes so that there has been some movement? I know that's been said to put it in writing somewhere, so I don't know if all the parents that were, had gone to the, the three sessions or whatever are aware that.
Yeah.
That there actually has been progress made? And then is there a way to put that, that that's not all of the progress, right? Like we still want something for middle school, high school. I never saw in the paper a couple of weeks ago that even the Medford High principal is, is using it to combat absenteeism. And it's still trying, maybe, maybe still try to extend at the elementary level also. Is there a way to make that more than just kind of a bullet?
Potentially. Dr. Daly?
I think, I think we can certainly communicate that out. I mean, so the next step for me would be to be communicating out about getting parents and everyone involved in our action team. We can provide an update. I can have the schools provide updates. I don't think requiring the amount of time or putting it in a school committee policy is anything we've ever done for, for any of our class periods. That's not something that is really at the school committee level.
I don't necessarily think like twenty-five, thirty minute, you know, extending the actual number, but just saying that it is still looking to be extended. And there is looking to be progress made at the middle and high school level. So I, I understand what you're saying about not necessarily like tacking to a number. But I do think that putting the twenty minutes, that, that has already been made, letting, letting people know that.
Sure. Yeah, I don't know what the elementaries, it sounds like maybe they haven't communicated out those changes. We can certainly do that. I can do that when I update everyone on these committees and just give some updates and some ideas. But those, those pieces are important, but it's, I would, I would just say that's not really a, a school committee policy level or school committee goal. It could be, you know, if we want, if you're saying you want to add what the school committee's goals are related to these areas? Is that what you're getting at maybe?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll just comment too. I mean, I think the school committee doesn't get into what the schedule at elementary or at the school is. And so we have to always be careful about going into areas because then we're going to be asked to decide on other things. And what is being taught in classrooms and what, you know, how much time is being spent on this and whether we're teaching to MCAS. And like, I, I would be very concerned about it being a slippery slope if we start saying, this is what you need to spend your day, the time of, you know, the time on in, you know, in a classroom or in, in a school. But yes, I mean, I agree with like, I, I think it's, just like we ask for presentations on what's happening with Power Block and things like that. We can ask the same things and ask for it to be communicated out, just like, again, people should understand, like they're, when a lot of people are questioning what is being taught in classrooms. We always said, but you can't opt your students out of things, but you can always know what is being taught. So I think parents should have a right to know what sort of the, you know, what, what is being done. So I think asking for it to be communicated out is something we can do. I don't know that we, I, I don't know if it's, if, if the amount of time in. I don't know if there's anything that codifies the amount of time on anything. Like, I mean, how much is spent on math versus, you know, science versus, you know, or like how much time for recess and. I don't know. I don't, I don't know what's even there, so.
I guess if it, because I know in other towns it has been extended at the school committee level. So I guess if it doesn't get done at the school committee level, how does it get done, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I think you would ask me to do it.
Okay.
If I'm not doing it, then I think you might need to put it more directly. But I think we've, you know, when you think about this, this was presented to us mid-year last year.
Yep.
We made immediate changes at all schools last year to try some things out and we implemented twenty minutes this year. I would ask the community just to trust that we're moving forward. When you talk about what Medford High is doing, everything I understand, we already do those things. They're in our power blocks here. That's what they're trying to implement there. We've been doing that for years here. But I think we could also talk about doing it better here and more, more across the board. And as we think about trying to add something like a power block to middle school, that's probably the best place that it fits in. That's not going to be as immediate. It's going to take a little bit more time. There's several contractual pieces that we have to look at.
Yeah.
And we're, we're, we are working on that. So I think, I don't think you need a school committee goal that's got numbers in it. I think that's not the best idea, given the culture here. That's my recommendation is to just give us a little bit of time. We've already hopefully shown that we've taken it in the right direction. The biggest thing that we need to think about when we're talking about going more than twenty minutes or going more than, or adding in other places is just the overall impact to the schedule in the day. And so in order to do that, there's a lot more data that needs to be gathered by us to make sure people understand that if there is a demand. Or if the school committee were to say to us, it has to be thirty-minute recess at the elementary schools. People need to understand that that means you're getting ten less minutes of math or ten less minutes of, people need to understand the impact of that. Because right now, when you just said, you want more recess? Absolutely. Everybody wants more recess. When they understand what that impact is, so that's going to take more time. So that's what the action, and that's the other piece that I say, this goal talks about, and we're going to have school committee members on the action committee. That's what that committee needs to do. That's the work of that committee this year. That group will have goals and that's where those goals belong. That group will have goals, and that's where those goals belong.
Okay.
And I think, I think those, I think individual committee members can also always explain what's happening. You know, and say, say that 20 minutes has been agreed upon by all the principals. Or the action committee could put out information that says, you know, this is what, what it is, you know. So I think that can be messaged out more. I don't know, I don't know that we need a policy on that.
Right.
I heard things happening.
Yeah, there's a couple of hand, Ms. Decker and Kesar.
Yeah, let's, I don't know who raised their hand first, so if you want to.
There's only one.
I can't see. Ms. Decker, did you raise your hand? You want to comment? I can't see or, I can't hear you, Ms. Decker, if you're trying to unmute. Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, so Elizabeth Decker, the founding member of the North Reading Recess Coalition, which started in the spring of 2024. We have 200, North Reading parents that are on it.
And then, Ms. Decker, can you say, can you say your address for the, for the record as well? Can you say your address?
21 Marblehurst Street.
Thank you.
I think it's important, so I'm glad Jen brought that up, because I think it is important to have it in writing somewhere simply to protect it from being scaled back. This should be a right, not a privilege for these kids. And so I think it's important to have that in writing somewhere. I don't know whether the right place to put it is, but I think that's important. And of course, that time is going to have to be found somewhere. And maybe that's scary for some people to hear. You might get 10 minutes less of math or 10 minutes less of reading. But overall, we know that the research says that this is going to help the kids academically as well as mentally and emotionally to have that outdoor recess time. So I think once that's conveyed to, to parents and others that this is going to hurt them academically, to have that extra time in fact is going to help them. I think that's an important thing to remember.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Buck.
And Dr. Daly, yeah?
And just to confirm, I, I completely agree with everything she's saying. I'm just saying, we don't want this to be top-down. That's just my advice. If it's a school committee mandate or something, I think we need to get everybody engaged in this decision. And that's what the K-12 action team is going to do. We can, we can put out flyers, we can, we can advertise whatever we want. And I also recommend maybe the policy subcommittee we can look through, see if there is any place that's appropriate, or we could speak to where that would be. You know, if it's in other districts' policies, we can look to see what they've written and see if there's a place for it. But I think we have to be, you know, think about, that also makes it harder too, right? If we had a policy last year, we couldn't have gone to 20 minutes without doing two readings of a change. You know, so it's, it, they're, just like with masks, like, we didn't, a lot of districts adopted a mask policy, and then they had to undo a mask policy. We decided not to do that, because we trusted at the administrative level to make things happen. So that's my recommendation in this district and this culture.
And again, I think every single member of the school committee has said on record, we support more recess. So no one's opposed to the idea of it. It's just, right now, we're just talking about what the goal is. And so the goal is to have at least one, and in this case, two members of the school committee be part of the discussion on that to try to figure out the right way to put it, where, where to put it, so. And, yeah, and to push it along, so. So I'm comfortable with the, the goal right now. And again, there might, that might lead to, you know, a policy or, or other issues or other things. But I think for right now, just for goal setting, we're just saying that there's discussions happening on that, and we want to make sure that the school committee are part of those discussions. Did anybody else have their hand raised? I can't see, okay. So those are the goals on educational programs, and then family and community relations. We had three goals there as well. The first one is to promote the Family University learning opportunities for families and community members throughout the school year. And this was really related to, we, we thought that we wanted to make sure that there's better attendance at some of these things. And so Noel and Jen are going to spearhead that. School committee will extend outreach to community members and support the districts in providing opportunities to involve the whole community in student events and programs. Tim and Noel are going to spearhead that. And again, that's more about, you know, when we're talking about overrides and the things that are happening at the schools and the money that we need, we need to make sure that we're including the entire community and letting them see what's happening here and make them be more a part of it. And finally, the school committee will review the school committee policies and structures in place related to school safety and support implementation of the rules, the role of the school resource officer and the community service sergeant. And Jeff and Jen are going to spearhead that. So those are the goals we have for the year. So we actually did add a number of ones that we didn't have last year and removed a few other ones. Anybody have any issues with specific ones or assignments or anything like that? I told up, we're all working very hard, and then there's Tim with four, but I'm just teasing.
He can join the bus committee, like to, Tim.
Oh, do you want, do you want to give one up? Do you want to?
I would, I, he can have that. I know he likes buses, I heard him say that.
Tim, do you want to do the bus one instead of Noel with me?
I would love to, Scott.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we'll get, so Noel will be down to six, like, and then Tim will be up at five. Perfect. Where's the bus one? The buses.
Financial.
No, it's over here, it's on the other one, okay. So two, number five will be, will be Tim and Scott. Okay, we need to approve these. So if I can have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 school committee goals as presented?
Move to approve the 2024 to 2025 school committee goals as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, vote, Noel.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five to zero, thank you very much.
Mr. Buck, just, I just want to say, great job to come up with some real action. Or, I mean, these, each of these goals, I can picture a presentation, I can picture meetings, I can picture action steps under them. We've really moved away from those, you know, continue to X, Y, Z. It's really, and there's a lot. So I think, you know, even when we evaluate and talk about what we did and what we didn't do, there's a lot on here, and a lot is accomplished. I'm going to, going to do some muting here.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I'll just remind the committee members that, like, we have to be self.
Driven.
Self-driven on some of these as well. I mean, some of them ones are, some of them are financial, and so we'll have to really wait till more of the budget stuff on that. But the non-financial things, like especially trying, to be trying to get out and talk about what's happening in the schools. I think it would be good to do that before the budget. And so, you know, the haunted playground, we just approved tonight, making sure to invite people to that. Say there are some skits. It's not only for, you know, just kids, you can come and see some of the skits that are happening. Talking about, you know, Mean Girls is going to be the performance in the fall. And so I think really just making sure about that. And Noel and I, you, you and I should talk about, at the Fine Arts Subcommittee, a little bit about that as well.
Yes, definitely. Is that on the schedule?
I don't know if we have.
It is not. We just had it emailed today to try to get some.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, budget goals. Mr. Connolly, do you want to lead us through the budget goals for the year? Or want us just to read them?
Yes. Yes, that'd be great. So there is a draft budget goals, like, within the packet. It's related to your financial management goals. Is everyone hearing me okay?
Yes, we are.
Trying to turn you down, actually.
You're very loud.
It's, it's me, you're good.
It's the owl.
Okay. There's a lot of similarities, and I was trying to certainly hear coercion, recentness between the, the two sets of school committee financial asset management goals and the specific budget goals geared towards key, key objectives as we develop or begin to develop fiscal year 2026 budget. So certainly, the first goal is we always want to approve a fiscal year 26 budget that reflects consistency with our strategic plan and NRPS 2025. Any, any other strategic initiatives also could be reflected in your school committee goals. Certainly, as part of your actions, just reference this, and someone I raised here, as I mentioned earlier, so exploring opportunities to reduce energy costs. Solar, charging stations would certainly be all part, part of that initiative. Continuing to support, not only through the Opportunities, Student Opportunities Act, but the way to reduce kindergarten fees, leading towards the eventual free full-day kindergarten routine. Been on there for many, many years, and it's part, been part of the budget process. And now we're, we're close, but not quite there. And then making steps towards reviewing access to a universal free pre-K program, preschool program. You referenced this earlier as well, but the current structure of use of fees for extracurricular and athletics and its impact on families, something we want to continue to look at. I think the initiative and the adoption of the universal cap has helped. And I think we're going to, as part of this goal, continue to review data on that in year two to see how many families are accessing it, how many families are close or at or below the cutoff. And reviewing these, these fee structures is important annually. We can certainly workshop this goal a little bit. I know it's restore, preserve, the strategies to look at restore and or preserving positions that would, as well as the educational support systems that were either eliminated or reduced in fiscal year 2025, while also continuing to move the district forward again in alignment with NRPS 202030. I think actually the goal one should, goal edited, I should say NRPS 2030, not 2025. This, this next goal is very similar to one of your action items under your financial asset management. So again, as I think Scott just referenced, we are in final kind of optional year of school busing. So we'll kind of continue to, to look at that. Obviously, the first of the option year, so we'll continue to kind of look at school busing and the market and the fees and the rates, and what with designing new right, new routes, new tier structures, collective school busing is, is out there in the market as we prepare for a bid and a horizon. So we'll be reviewing anything with school transportation as we again look to decide through the budget process whether we opt to extend the last year or, or try to test the market again. And then the final goal, which has been kind of consistent for many years, is we all know we work very closely with, in collaboration with the chairs and vice chairs of select board, finance committee, town administrator, town's finance director, even members now of the CIPC, capital improvement planning committee to discuss, you know, changes in the budget development calendar, as well as where we go from here. We all know there was a, obviously, a field override attempt in, you know, what will be our strategy going forward. So those conversations, I think, have already started through that committee, finance planning team. And we'll have to have that very early in the process as well, as a goal. So turn over any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. I'm aligned with everything. I'm aligned with everything. I don't think, I think the restoring versus preserving, I think you worded it well, because I think that's got to be a big question for this year. But we can have, all we put here is to develop strategies about that, so. Anybody have comments, thoughts? Mr. Sutherland, any questions or thoughts on this? I just can't see you.
No, it, it, very closely aligned to our goals. I don't see anything that I necessarily change or tweak here.
So the only change on this would be number one, as Mr. Connolly mentioned, it should be a reference to NRPS 2030, since fiscal year 26 is beyond 2025. So would that change if we can have a motion to approve North Reading school committee's fiscal year 2026 budget goals?
Do I need to mention that in the motion?
Yeah, you can, just say, as edited, as revised.
Okay, okay. Move to approve the 2024-25 budget goals as amended.
Let me just say fiscal year 2026.
Fiscal year, oh, you're right.
Yeah.
Fiscal year 2026 budget as amended to include the NRPS 2030.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Noel.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five to zero, thank you very much. We have one.
Should I do an option year on 2025? So it's just.
One, one set of minutes? Do we want to do the minutes for August 26?
I think that's me, everyone just loves to hear my voice.
Yeah. Or ju, just the goals workshop, though.
All right. Move to approve the minutes of the August 2026 goals workshop as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Noel.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five to zero. Budget update, none at this time. Staffing? Dr. Daly?
Just a few updates. We hired two paraprofessionals at the Bachelor School, Ms. Amy Solomon, Ms. Mary Shannon. We've reappointed Ms. Danielle O'Haire as a Title I math tutor at the Hood School. At the Little School, we've hired Stacy Downing as a paraprofessional. Kelly Flynn is new to us as a Title I math tutor. Mia Ferrera is a paraprofessional, and Patty Petrosino is a paraprofessional. The high school, we have hired Ms. Jordan Haynes as a speech language pathologist.
Only question on this is, Mr. Connolly, do we have building-based subs again? I mean, I mean, are we, are we short any, or are we pretty good to start the year?
We're short one, I believe. But we did make some hires kind of late in the, in August. So I think we're, we're close. I believe we're short one at one of the, at the, one of the elementary schools, the Hood School. I think we're, I think we're close to getting everyone on, on board.
And what, do we have two at each school?
Two at each school, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions on staffing? No bids and donations, no grants, no overnight trip requests? Subcommittee updates, finance planning team, Matt? Mr. Freeman, you want to update, you want me to update?
I can, I can provide an update. Yeah, so we, we met talking about, most of the budget update was about the, uh, now it just slipped my mind, the.
October town meeting and the.
Yeah.
Projects in town.
Debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion, that's the thing I was trying to think of. Wow, what a long day. Most of it was, was about the debt exclusion and the strategies around how to approach debt exclusion, as well as the, the money in the town, how money has been allocated, what, uh, what our strategy should be for using any additional free cash that might be around from, from previous projects. So it, it really ranged across a number of subjects. It did not get into some of the topics that we might be a little bit more interested in, specifically with the school committee. That is something that will come up at the, the next discussion. Hopefully, we will put that at the, or at the beginning of the agenda rather than the tail end.
Well, the, the, the previous one, we never got to, strategy for this year. Put it as number two on the agenda this time, and we never got to.
We almost, we almost made it.
But the, the, the good news is, just report good news. And I'm guessing they're talking about this at the Select Board meeting tonight anyways.
As we speak.
But the, the good news is that, for example, we had had $1.5 million grant that was provided for the sewer project, you know, the wastewater treatment that, that is now not moving forward anymore. And it looks like we'll be able to repurpose that to fund the project that is, because there's another sewer project that is happening where Town Center is being connected to the wastewater, wastewater pumping system at, at the school. And so it looks like we can use that grant towards that, which would free up other money to be moved around. So a lot of the discussion was really about, okay, if this gets freed up by, if this can be paid by the grant, then ARPA funds, we're going to do that, but now ARPA funds can fund this other thing, and just kind of figuring out what to fund with what money, so we don't lose it, so. Some of those are going to be policy decisions by the Select Board that we're not really involved in. Dr. Daly?
It's just that it's a tight timeline, because those have to be planned out by the end of this year. So there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done.
But the, the outcome of this would be potentially being able to either not have to do some money through debt exclusions or maybe free cash being freed up that could be used for other things in the future, so. But there's a lot of discussion on what to do and how to move things around and timing of everything, so.
There, there are more than enough projects that are ready to be funded. It's a matter of what, what the priority is.
Correct. Future update, uh, future committee update, or meetings, finance planning team is meeting again September 18th at 8:00 a.m. Substance, or actually, were there any other updates or any other subcommittees? Anything else? No. Finance planning team is meeting September 18th at 8:00. Substance Abuse Coalition is meeting September 23rd at 10:00 a.m. Evaluation Subcommittee is meeting on September 23rd at 10:00 a.m. Policy Subcommittee is meeting at the exact same time at 10:00 a.m.
Yeah, so you're going off the, the printed version. Evaluation Subcommittee is to be determined. determined. Policy Subcommittee, September 19th at 3:00.
I printed out, I printed out this morning, so it wasn't that late, so.
I, I left them in there, because we were exchanging emails.
Yeah.
Over the weekend, so I apologize.
In all fairness for the evaluation, I'm the bottleneck on that. Let's, let's be clear.
We're not leaving.
Are we evaluating this for last year still, or yet, or not?
Yeah.
Or we just got to do that?
We're going to, we're going to get it on the calendar before we leave.
Okay. Administrative report, Dr. Daly?
Just briefly, wanted to thank everyone who attended the new family welcome. It was, it was fairly well-attended. This room was pretty well-packed. We had some great representatives from the town. We had the library here. Youth Services was here. There were, I know elder services, folks were ill, but they sent some things up. Rec Department sent some things up for the children to engage with. There were people here, brand-new to town, people here, brand-new to the schools. We had a few people here that had been in town for a few years, and just had never had something like this. So it was a good signal to me, and there was an equal number of people who joined us online. We had all of our administrative team here to welcome, and just to put names with faces, to get some questions answered. I thought it was successful, and it's something that I want to do every year moving forward. So it's sort of that first Family University welcoming piece. I don't know if anyone else wants to share that was there.
Yeah, I, I was, I think Tim and I both went in, I thought it was excellent. It was a great idea. It was a, you know, pretty well-attended. Yeah, I, I was very happy that we did it, and I think it definitely should be something that we do every year. And, and the very first question, when he opened up for questions, was, "I heard the budget over. I didn't pass. What does this mean for the school?"
Which is good.
It's engagement. That's great.
I just wanted to add, too, special thanks to Ms. Luckwitz and the Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, who supported us with the, the food, the pizza for that evening was, was great, that they were able to contribute as well. They weren't able to join us, but they shared several slides. The presentation was recorded, and the slides are available, and I sent that out widely as well. Is there anything?
Raises, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add, I think that event removed a lot of anxiety, even a lot of very anxious parents. I thought it went very well. I think all the questions were answered superbly by everybody in the room. And people stuck around for 20, 30 minutes after the meeting, just chatting. I think it went very well. I think it should be added to the, to the yearly routine. I think it was great.
Thank you.
Great.
Triple E up.
Policy E E E. No, this is, uh, triple E. Just wanted to share the good, again, no news is good news, similar to the buses. But I did communicate out that we had, right before school started, there were mosquitoes that tested positive. They were spraying all around town. We did spraying at the schools. We had to get an emergency waiver in order to use different chemicals than we typically use at the schools. The waiver was approved. We did the spraying. Everything took place at night on September 3rd. We posted our notification at all schools. And the good news was that there were no increase in positive pools in this last drawing from last week. North Reading is moderate. You will remain moderate until the frost. So it's basically, we're not going to go back down, but we're not going to go up. And so basically, the message is, be cautious at dusk to dawn, wear mosquito repellent. If we were to get into those higher levels, we would need to be discussing possibly moving evening activities and rescheduling. Plymouth, for example, had to move their Friday night football game to Friday afternoon. We're not at that place, but that's where we might have to be if we were to go into the, the next levels of critical or, uh, I forget the, the next level, but critical is the next one. So again, right now, we are still in the moderate level.
And, and, yeah, I think I saw, I saw a report on this, too, where it was like, they were very few mosquitoes to collect, thankfully, because of the, because of the spraying, and all of them negative.
And also the cold weather has probably helped.
Yeah. But the, are there any neighboring districts that we play in sports that, that impact our schedules yet, or not?
So, um, we're sort of an island right now in the moderate level. I reached out to the other districts that are in the Cape Town League that are also in moderate, and none of them have made any changes. So Newbury Port is one. I know that Triton is impacted in one of their districts, but not where the fields in the school is located. So they're not in moderate there. And Penntucket as well. So they're, they're in that moderate level, but no one is impacted in terms of cancellation. So we're staying in, in regular contact, in case there's any changes. We're very hopeful, though, that by being so ahead of this, and everyone spraying, and reducing the risk, that we can continue with our activities. But everyone should certainly be cautious, wear bug spray, and, and be, be conscious.
Thank you very much. Correspondence?
I, I just wanted to share, everyone received a thank you note for, from Piper Kerwin for the James Gregory Hand and Memorial Scholarship. She says she misses North Reading, but she's excited to start at Northeastern University in the fall. It was just really thoughtful, and I thought it was worth going around.
Very nice. Okay, future business. We have a meeting on September 23rd at 6:30. Town meeting, we don't know when it is yet. I think that's being decided tonight when we're here. And then?
So I, I do have an update.
Oh, you have an update?
Oh, really?
Exactly. At 7:51, Michael Gobert, it is, is going to continue on October 7th, where it originally was.
What, what was it discussed about? I, I don't care. I don't.
I think someone was going to be away.
There are two members that may not be able to be there on the 7th, but it's going to continue on the 7th.
And they're probably the two that voted to keep it on the 7th. And then, so, so that town meeting will be at 7, so we'll have a meeting posted shortly before that.
Yes, I'll actually change this to 6:45. Thank you.
Um, and Capital Improvement Plan update will be on October 21st. If there's nothing else, we will entertain the favorite motion of the night to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Did I just say one thing?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry.
Too bad, too late.
One of the school improvement plans, Mr. Maloney's not able to be here on September 23rd, so I was going to have the Bachelor present on a separate night on the 21st. Is that an issue for anyone?
Not surprising. The Bats thinks they're special all the time, so.
Stop it.
I figured, rather than trying to get everyone to rearrange their schedules and move, that I would just have him present a different night.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you. Now, move to approve. No, what am I doing?
To adjourn.
To adjourn. I think we all need to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call vote. Noel? Jeff?
Yep.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes five to zero. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night.